Mike check one two, testing one two. Mike check one two, testing one two.
Good morning, half a day. The Committee on Culture and Justice is now called to order. Today is Monday, June 5, 2017. The time is 10:06. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on May 25, 2017, and again on May 31, 2017. The notice was also published online in the Guam Daily Post on May 26 and in print on May 27, 2017. The notice was also published in the Pacific Daily News on June 2, 3rd, and 5th. We have three agenda items today. The appointment of Joseph C. Wesley to be a member of the Guam Parole Board. Bill number 93-34, introduced by myself and Senator Talina Cruz Nelson, an act to amend Section 80.72b of Article 5, Chapter 80, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, to amend Section 85.10 and to add Section 85.61 of Chapter 85, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to improving the Guam Parole Board processes. And the final item on the agenda is Bill number 91-34, introduced by myself, an act to amend Sections 1602 and 1603 of Chapter 16, Title I, Guam Code annotated, relative to promoting affordable access to updated and searchable laws, rules, and regulations, executive orders, attorney general opinions, and court decisions. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this morning's hearing. To my right is the Vice Chairman of the Committee on Culture and Justice, Senator Talina Nelson, and to my left is Senator Mary Torres. Thank you for coming. I'd like to also thank all of you for attending this morning. And we will begin with the appointment of Joseph C. Wesley. Mayor Wesley, if you could please come up. And there are others who have signed up to testify, including Connie Duenias, Michelle Titanau. And there are others who have signed up in support without indicating that they would testify. And so I thank you all for being here and for your support of this nomination. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on behalf of the nomination this morning? All right, if not, we will proceed. Before I hear from the panel, I would like to read into the record the duties of the Guam Parole Board as stated in Section 85.26, Chapter 85 of Title IX, Guam Code annotated. The Board is authorized to release on parole any person confined in any penal or correctional institution of Guam and to revoke parole or discharge from parole any parolee as provided in Article 5 of Chapter 80. The Board shall adopt such rules and procedures not inconsistent with law as it may deem proper or necessary to carry out its duties and shall be in accordance with the open government law, except as herein provided. Such rules and procedures shall include but not be limited to the following: rights and restrictions of an inmate during a parole application or revocation hearing; presence of legal counsel or lay representative on behalf of an inmate during a hearing; the right of an inmate to receive in writing a specific reason or reasons for denial of parole, to include deficiencies to be addressed in preparation for a future parole application; rules for the refusal of a member due to a conflict; any other rules and furtherance of the mandates of the Board. Nothing herein shall prevent the Board from interviewing victims in private. Nothing shall prevent the Board from excluding any persons that they determine may unduly influence a victim's testimony. In pursuant to rules and regulations established by the Board, the Board may conduct deliberations in closed meetings and may vote by secret ballot on matters relative to the release, on, revocation of, or discharge from parole, notwithstanding the provisions of the open government law. Those are the duties of the Parole Board. And this Board, according to Guam law, serves without stipend. So now we will hear this morning from... If I could hear from Connie Duenias, Mrs. Duenias, if... You may begin.
I'm here. Good morning, Madam Chair. I'm very... I'm here in support of my brother, Joe Wesley. I've been with him since I am on the Board, and then he came in. And he's doing a very fantastic, an excellent job advising Joe's parolee and the family of the good and what is right and how to live the life of parolee. I am very impressed when he talked to them. He told them that these people are just coming out from the prison, and they have to understand that they are just beginning to bond with the family and please give time to interact again back into the family. I am very impressed with that, and I thank you for that. And God bless you for that. And I hope, you know, the parolee and the family and the friends that are there for this parolee, that we're trying to see whether he can succeed out there for the community, with the community, can heal that, take it, and build that within themselves. So I support his nomination, and I like to start and always working with him together with Michelle Titanau and the others that are on board right now. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. Duenias. Mrs. Duenias is also a current member of the Parole Board. And I thank you for your service.
I am very in support. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Chairman of the Parole Board, Michelle Titanau, you may proceed.
Madam Vice Chair, Senator Torres, and Senator Nelson, good morning. Good morning to those who are here. I'm just so thankful, number one, that Mr. Wesley, my colleague on the Parole Board, is even willing to be able to continue to serve. And I'm also thankful that our governor reappointed him. And I'm so thankful we're here today because with your favorable and hopeful confirmation, we can continue the Parole Board processes. Just working with Mr. Wesley in this last term, ma'am, he's like Auntie Connie was saying, he's excellent. He's so dedicated. He's willing to commit. We've been to different locations in our parole hearing. And he's flexible, works with us. And he's really humble. And we really work together as a team really well. And I really appreciate that. And even though we can have some discussions, I call them passionate discussions, right, sir? We're able to reason through it all to make the best decision that we can. And he also definitely supports the goals and missions of the Guam Parole Board. I just want to preface a little bit with Auntie Connie. What she's saying is sometimes when the family members come before us, whether they're on the victim's side or the offender's side, we have an opportunity to encourage, we have an opportunity to consult or give our recommendation as to how to help the offender or the victim. And so we just have those moments when we share. And we all kind of do that. So we're thankful. That's what Auntie Connie was trying to say, that she advises in that manner. We have those good opportunities, again, ma'am, just to get folks to a better state after they've been paroled or as they're making application for parole. So please, I humbly ask for your favorable support, the committee and the legislature as a whole, to reconfirm Mr. Joseph Wesley to serve again on the Guam Parole Board.
Donkulana Sidus Maasi, Dan Sidus Infan Benandisi. Sidus Maasi. Thank you. And one more, Angelita Menjola, if you... You may proceed. Thank you for coming.
Ladies Senators, thank you for caring for your people of Guam. What happened to the rest, but anyway. I just want to state that I'm in support for the appointment and confirmation of Mr. Joseph Wesley. I met him on several occasions when he was the mayor of Santa Rita. I belong to the Southern Soy Water Conservation District. And he has appeared before our Board to seek help with some erosion problem in Santa Rita. So I know that he can do a great job being a member of the Board of Parole. He's a caring person, respectful, and a good statesman for Guam. So I'm 100% support for his confirmation.
Thank you very much. Mayor Wesley, you may proceed.
I'm very humble, the three ladies here, on my right and my left. Anyway, in the beginning, Bananas Sidus, Halfaday, and Buenas. Madam Chair, Vice Speaker, Terahy. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Mrs. Nelson, Senator Nelson, and my village, my mayor for village in Santa Rita, my Senator, Mary Torres. Gua Ho Si Joseph, Joseph Si Wesley, former mayor of Santa Rita. I'm very honored and pleased to be here with Governor Kawo and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio. I'm very humbled that they continue my services. Yes, I will take the helm for it. I will go forward whatever the people of Guam have needed. That's my passion for it. It's for the people of Guam where they need more. And most of all, I would like to say again is that Madam Chair, thank you for your time and for putting up this appointment. And most of all, for the 34 Guam Legislature. But my mission right now is, I hope and pray that you guys will have a heart and sincere to consider me for this Parole Board members and also for most of all, Sidus Maasi, Donkulana Sidus Maasi, and Malama Salamapu. Thank you again. It's very short.
Sidus Maasi, ma'am. Senator Nelson, did you have any questions or comments for the panel?
I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who have partaken in this Parole Board. Thank you for your courage and your compassion towards the victims, but also to those that have made those mistakes in their life. Mayor, I really... I don't have anything to ask you. I know you know what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm in favor of your appointment. And I humbly congratulate you and thank you for coming forward and being a service of our community and also helping with mitigating some of the problems down in the South and some of the issues that we face with our military. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator... Senator Torres?
Mr. Mayor, it's very difficult to find people committed, especially to areas that are sometimes very controversial, very emotional. And so I just want to express my thanks to you for agreeing to serve on the Board again. And you certainly have a long history of service and leadership. And I also know you personally as a very good-hearted and compassionate man. So just want to thank you very much and assure you that you have my support on your nomination.
Thank you, Senator.
I want to thank all of you for testifying and your support of this nomination. And I also very much want to thank the mayor for agreeing to serve again. It's a very challenging Board to serve on. And like I said earlier, they have no stipend. It's one of these Boards... We might look at that later. But you've been serving without stipend, all of you. And we know this is all in the pursuit of justice. And I thank you for that and a service to our community. And I thank you for putting all your years of service in the community, as being mayor, your service at the port, Police Department, and all your training. And so your packet contains all the certificates from your various training. And I think that's very helpful for this Board. And I wish the Board continued success and efficiency in its duties. And but I would like to ask you, ma'am, if you don't mind, a couple of questions?
Sure, ma'am.
From your experience, what do you feel is the biggest challenge for the Board in fulfilling its duties?
The biggest one there is the family of the victim. How they feel that they always come every year and they should be more protective. And the Court and the government should work more for protecting the victim's family. Because that's the most harder, the most critical one. They deserve more because every year we're going to be seeing them all the time. Yes, those prisoners should be... Department of Corrections should be corrected. But most of them, they haven't learned yet a lesson. They should be breaking some law in prison. Sorry to say that. But we have that statistic, that data in front of us that what he or she had done is supposed to be corrected. So that's the biggest one there.
Yes, you're reminding me of the recent news, I think just a couple of days ago, of a parolee who committed a crime while on parole. So it's a continuous challenge that I'm sure you are very aware of. And we have to work together with the courts. I know they're establishing a reentry program. And I'm trying to ensure also that they are working very closely with you to make sure that these programs work together to ensure justice. that these programs work together to ensure justice for our entire community. All right. If there are no other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. I will be continuing to accept testimony on behalf of the nomination of Joseph Wesley to the parole board until June 14. You may submit testimony to our office here at the Guam Congress Building or to the mailroom or through email to senatorserlaeguam@gmail.com. Next item on the agenda is bill number 93, introduced by myself and Senator Nelson. It's an act to amend 80.72B of Article 5 and amend section 85.10 and to add section 85.61 of Chapter 85, Title IX, Guam Code annotated, relative to improving the Guam Parole Board processes. I would like to ask those who signed up to testify. Okay, I'll go in the order here. Mayor Luhon, if you could please have a seat at the table. Connie Duaneus. I'm sorry, I should have just let you stay up there. Mrs. Duaneus. Patricia Canata. Michelle Titanu. Anita Ariola. And Angelita Menjola, if we can all fit. And thank you to the rest of you who also signed up in support of the bill. And those who have submitted written testimony, including Dan Swaveley and Anita Ariola. Before we hear from the panel, I would just like to briefly introduce the bill. Currently, Guam law provides that parole will be granted to every person confined in a Guam penal or correctional institution. I'm sorry. Any person, every person confined shall be eligible for release on parole at any time after the service of two-thirds of his fixed sentence or after a greater time set by the court. Or for those convicted of a violent crime, parole, they are eligible for parole upon completion of 85% of his or her fixed sentence. And for those sentenced to life imprisonment, they are eligible for parole after they've been confined for 25 years. This is the current law. Violent crime for purposes, I mean, of the parole statute include, violent crime is defined as one or more of the following: aggravated murder, murder, manslaughter, aggravated assault, and when it is a felony in the first degree, kidnapping, first-degree criminal sexual conduct, second-degree criminal sexual conduct, aggravated arson, first-degree robbery, second-degree robbery. So the bill 93 is intended to improve the process of the parole board for both the board and for the victims of violent crimes and their loved ones. Year to year, many of the victims are asked to recount painful memories during parole hearings and endure, again, the trauma that they experienced. This bill will provide some respite by ensuring that persons who are incarcerated for violent crimes and denied parole for two consecutive years will wait for four years from the date of the last parole denial for the next hearing. So currently, they're entitled to come up for parole hearings every year. And this would extend that to four years if they've been denied two times in a row. This bill would also reduce the number of members on the parole board and allow quorum to occur with three members present as opposed to the current four members present. And it reduces the membership from seven to five. Members of the parole board have expressed to us that reaching quorum has been an issue in the past. And this change would ensure that more cases be heard to meet the demand in a timely manner. I've been reviewing the parole records and I see that recently, the parole board's been working very diligently to catch up on a backlog of cases that were exacerbated by not being able to reach quorum for several years. And so I thank you for your diligent service and your long hours and hard work. Lastly, bill 93 adds emphasis to the Crime Victims Rights Act of 2004, which is already in statute, but ensures that the parole board and parole officers adhere to the act. Victims currently have rights in parole hearings, and I'm just going to state those for the record. AGCA Section 160.92, right of victim to address or submit statement to parole board. A victim shall have the right to address or submit a written statement for consideration by a parole board member or a member of any other panel having authority over the prisoner's release on parole. Not less than 30 days before a review of the prisoner's release, a victim who has requested notice shall be given written notice by the Department of Corrections informing the victim of the pending review and of victims' rights under this section. The victim at his or her own expense may be represented by counsel at the review. A victim shall receive notice of the decision of the parole board, if applicable, notice of the date of the prisoner's release on parole. Notice shall be mailed within a reasonable time after the board reaches its decision and, but not later than 14 days after the board or panel has reached its decision. A victim shall receive notice of any request made for a pardon and may file an objection to said pardon with the parole board. And I understand that the parole board is now reviewing pardons. They've been actively reviewing pardons submitted to it. So, all right. When I accept testimony and... Mayor Luhon, would you like to go first? Thank you.
Good morning, Honorable Vice Speaker and Chair Theresa Terlahe, Honorable Senator Kalina Nelson, and Honorable Senator Mary Komocha. For the record, my name is Doris Flores Luhon, Mayor of Inalahan. I know Ben and Pat Canata personally, and I have witnessed their personal struggles in getting petitions signed and providing testimonies every year, almost every year. I was even present for the last two parole hearings. The entire family has struggled throughout the years to deal with Melissa's tragic death, especially her children. This bill will help to alleviate at least a small portion of the pain that they and all the victims' families continue to deal with on a daily basis. Therefore, I am in full support and passage of bill 9334 into public law. Donkuluna Sidhuus Maasi for introducing this bill, said Honorable Vice Speaker.
Thank you, ma'am. Could I also ask Dan Swaveley to have a seat at the panel? Thank you. Next is Connie Duaneus. Would you like to present testimony?
Good morning again. This is Connie Duaneus again. And I'm a former mayor. I'm a retired police officer. I'm a victim advocate. And I'm here to support this bill. This is well-written. And I hope, you know, and pray that it pass. Because I can tell you for, I've been sitting on that parole for the last 18 years, and I am also a victim of that. I have a first cousin that went through the parole every year, every year. And every time, the family is trying to heal, especially my... It doesn't heal. It comes back again the following year, that this guy has to come out. Finally, almighty God, have taken my first cousin's son home. And we're done with it. And I thank God for that. So as I said, this is well-written. Please pass it. Please do it. This is a wonderful bill. And I'm sure that the family, you know, to all of these victims, we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Sidhuus Maasi, ma'am. Mary Duaneus Agomas. Thank you very much.
Honorable Vice Speaker Theresa Terlahe, members of the committee. My name is Patricia Polna Canata. On July 4th, 1984, Anthony Duaneus murdered my daughter Melissa when he shot her in the neck during an argument. Tony was sentenced to life in prison with parole after 20 years. In 2005, Tony was eligible for parole for the first time and seven times since then. My family and I have filed parole requests. Seven times, my husband and I have had to relive the heart-wrenching loss of my daughter and we listened to the testimonies over and over of how Tony murdered my daughter and took her from our life forever. Seven times, Melissa's children, Patricia, Lilani, AJ, were reminded once again that their mother was not able to share their lives, their happy times, their hard eggs, their marriage, and birth of her grandchildren. My family and other victims of violent crime have gathered here today to demonstrate our support of bill 9294. I am 76 years old, my husband Ben is 80 years old, and to fight, to do what is right for our daughter and grandchildren is to seem mentally and mostly exhausted. Please remember the families who are victims of violent crimes who will leave the agonies and grief of losing their loved one, loved one at every parole hearing. We humbly ask you to amend and pass the bill. Pufa boot adzuda ham. Sidhuus Maasi.
Sidhuus Maasi. Goodbye. And all the family that are here, thank you very much for being here today and for your continued testimony in this regard. Ms. Titanu?
You may proceed. All right, ma'am. Manana Sidhuus Tatlu, Vice Speaker, and Senators Nelson and Torres. I just really want to thank you. I've been serving on this parole board for almost 10 years now. And as Ms. Connie was saying, and as Ms. Canata just said, every year, the family members have to come before the parole board, as the current law reads. And it does reopen the wounds. They relive the experience, violent experience. They were just thrown into this situation, they didn't know. And they have to relive it every year. Ma'am, and sitting behind the board, as you're sitting in front of us, we sit behind when people come to us. It's very, it is, the word is heart-wrenching. I'm sorry to report, but it is very heart-wrenching to see that. We don't know the experience. I don't know what it is for someone to have been taken from my life and ripped away from my life and then for me to go and spin off into that. How would I feel? The trauma, major trauma, that an incident as a violent crime does to an individual, much less children. And in many of these cases, many of these cases, there have been children involved. And now these children have grown up. And I'm sorry to say that, not many have done well emotionally, spiritually. They struggle physically, I think, and just with their medical situations. And I really think it's because even though we can say, get some counseling, get some healing, it's just so traumatic. It's, we don't know the depths of the darkness, right? And only God, only God can really help and change and heal. We're not God. But what we can do is help, try to help alleviate some of that pressure, that trauma every year to be relived with, when the victim's family comes before us. You know what I usually say to victims, or to the offender families? I need to preface by saying, this board is also a restorative justice board. We really believe that. So when somebody, when an applicant comes before parole, comes for parole, we consider that he's doing well or she's doing well, and we want them to be successful. When this board paroles somebody, we want them to be successful. And it takes their family, their community, for them to do that and to keep on moving in that next direction. So I need to preface that because what I share with the family members of the offenders, when they come before us and they want their family members out, just as the opposite happens when victims come before us. You know, I tell them, I said, you know, at least, just please consider, I want to remind you that you can touch your family member, incarcerated family member. You can talk to them on the phone. You can visit them. You can have a relationship still with them. Even though it's behind bars, they're still alive. But the family of the victims, their family members, they cannot, they cannot pull somebody out of the ground. He's already decayed in their bodies. They can't. So I gently, as much as I can, remind the offender families, please, remember, you can touch and talk to your family members. These folks, victims, their family members, they cannot. It's really hard for us, it's difficult for us every year to go through this, every year. More important, how much more important is it for them to go through this every year, ma'am? Every year, to relive this, to relive all the different situations. And each one of them have their own stories. And each one of them have their little parts that they play to help in the collateral damage that they were just thrown into. They didn't ask it, they didn't ask for it. So we're just trying to help our community. As much as we want healing, of course, for everybody, as much as one day we'd love to see offender and victims restored, it takes a lot before it actually gets there. So I think, I really believe this, the change in this bill will help alleviate a lot of that trauma every year from the families and helps them, will help alleviate them reopening those wounds. And so please, I really, really thank you, ma'am, and your team, for putting this bill together. We just want our island people to be at a better place, and we want our parole board processes much better. If you can support this bill, I would definitely appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. If I could just ask the audio and video people to just take a shot of the room for a minute, because I want to acknowledge that here we have very, people here who are family members of these victims and that many of them are holding signs. And I know many of them are parents, children, sisters and brothers of these victims, mothers. And I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you. And if I could also ask Senator Carlotta Leongerero, if you could have a seat at the panel? Thank you. All right, next we have Dan Swaveley?
I also appear today on behalf of Jan Rubenstein in support of the intent, but not all the detail, of bill 9334. If there was ever a piece of legislation... If there was ever a piece of legislation for which right and wrong is so easily discernible, this is it. For those of us who ask for some relief from the annual obligation to plead and re-plead our, our grief before the parole board, and on behalf of Jan Rubenstein, and our anger over the unspeakably abhorrent, cowardly action of her murderer, this bill is so welcome. Unless you have lost a friend or family member to a violent offender and must relive the pain of recounting those dreadful events every year before the parole board, I can say with certainty that you have no idea how emotionally wearing and mentally difficult it becomes. So the prospects of Bill 9334 are indeed encouraging, and my family and I are grateful to the sponsors and all of you who will vote for its passage. That said, Bill 9334 can be easily and meaningfully improved by lengthening the interval between two consecutive parole board denials and the eligibility for another parole. Why only four years, why not longer? Let's think this through. After two consecutive denials for parole of a violent offender, what can possibly change over a period of only four years in prison that would reverse the circumstances and reasoning for the parole boards prior to denials? Can good behavior while in prison for four years remediate the penalty for cold-blooded murder? Of course, that is for the parole board to decide, and I fully respect their judgment. Yet, I should think that four years is insufficient time to change the circumstances that led to two consecutive denials. There is no science to calculating the correct number of years between petitioning for parole, and certainly there is no fairness factor to consider. Because if fairness were to enter this equation, Jan Rubenstein would not have been murdered, and I for one would not be here today. And please remember this, while violent offenders are waiting for their next opportunity to petition for parole, they continue to be afforded regular visits and other opportunities to socialize with their families. While those of us here today testifying in support of this bill, on behalf of Jan Rubenstein, including her three daughters and one grandson, will never, ever have the opportunity to see her again. So there's ample reason to benefit the victim, not the offender, in determining the number of interval years between parole petitions, and four years is not enough. Rather, I ask that you lengthen the time to 10 years. It's a reasonable period, given two consecutive denials, continued inmate visiting privileges, and the pain and burden placed on the friends and families of the victim to reappear, reappear before the parole board. I close by recognizing the parole board and their unwavering quest to seek justice under the most trying circumstances. And in one of the most difficult phases of our criminal justice system, we are we are so fortunate to have each one of those members, along with the compassion, patience, and judgment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Swate. Next, we have Anita Ariola, Attorney Ariola.
Thank you, and good morning, Vice Speaker Terri Salai, Senator Rajine Biscoli, Senator Telenya Nelson, and Senator Mary Torres. I usually appear before the legislature as a lawyer for a client, um, to advocate for some legislation for them or some action from the legislature. Today, I appear as an individual and in my personal capacity. I am writing to express my wholehearted endorsement of Bill 9334, a bill that limits the period of time in which inmates' convicting crimes may reapply for parole. I am here for my friend Jan Rubenstein, who was brutally murdered. A picture of her is on the side to the right. I have appeared before the Guam Parole Board for several years to argue against the parole application of Caesar Dizon, her killer. On August 23rd, 1995, Dizon shot and killed Jan Rubenstein, who was my dear friend and colleague. Just an hour before the shooting, Jan had represented Caesar Dizon's wife in a bitter divorce case before Judge Benjamin J.F. Cruz. After the hearing, Dizon followed Jan back to her office, where he waited until she exited her car. He followed her as she ascended the stairs to her office, he came up behind her and shot her in the back of her head. She lay in a coma and was sustained on life support for four days until she died in the early morning hours of August 27, 1995. Her daughters Molly, Rachel, and Megan, who were seven, six, and four, were deprived of their mother for the rest of their lives. The Caesar Dizon's violent murder of Jan was not the only incident of violence he committed. His courts records, his court records show that in mid-June of 1995, he punched his 15-year-old daughter in the face, and she had to be taken to the hospital. He was arrested for family violence and child abuse. On June 20th, 1995, Mrs. Dizon filed her complaint for divorce alleging physical and mental abuse against her and her children, and requested a restraining order. The restraining order was granted. On July 30th, 1995, Dizon took his five-year-old son to Tremoral Village. He pointed to the tower and threatened to commit suicide, telling his son he would throw himself out of the tower. On August 6th, 1995, Dizon bought a nine-millimeter semi-automatic pistol. On August 23rd, 1995, after Dizon shot Jan, the police obtained a description of his vehicle. They pulled him over and found a nine-millimeter semi-automatic pistol on the seat of his car, which matched the description of the gun used to murder Jan, and they found a box full of ammunition. The foregoing events show that Dizon had a history of violence. They also show that his act was a cold-blooded, premeditated killing of Jan. For the last several years, we have been able to urge the Guam Parole Board to deny Dizon's repeated request for parole. Last year, we were very concerned because we read about the release of Jonathan Pence in August 2016, who was serving a life sentence for killing his shipmate, Janice Deacon. What we know is that Janice Deacon's family was unable to attend the parole hearing because they are off-island. His sister wrote to oppose his release, but apparently that was not enough. So we asked Jan's daughter, Rachel Lannan, who lives in California, to come to Guam and appear at Dizon's parole hearing and testify against his release. We also started an online petition on a website called Friends and Family of Jan Forever: Deny Her Killer's Parole. We initially had a goal of 500 signatures, but we obtained 1,134 signatures. I have included the website URL in this letter, and I strongly urge you to read all of the comments from persons from all over the world who knew and loved Jan and who opposed Dizon's release. Rachel, her daughter, has sent a letter, which we will read today, also supporting Bill 9334. I want to inform the committee today that the U.S. Supreme Court has long held that parole is not a constitutional right, it is a privilege. Parole is a creature of statute, and as such, state and territorial legislatures can elect laws that create, limit, or abolish parole. In fact, 16 states have abolished discretionary parole for all offenders. Another four states have abolished discretionary parole for certain violent offenders or other crimes against a person. In Guam, we have discretionary parole, a system in which a parole board has discretionary authority to conditionally release prisoners based on a statutory determination of eligibility. The members of the Guam Parole Board are hard-working individuals, and I commend them for their dedication and hard work. It cannot be easy to hear victims' families plead for denial of an inmate's parole application or the inmate's families' pleas for release. I know for a fact that it is very difficult under current law to get a quorum for the parole board to meet. I know this because over the years, the parole hearings for Dizon have been continued numerous times for failure to reach a quorum. In addition, the decisions on his applications have been denied or delayed for months due to a lack of a quorum. I support the revision in Bill 9334 to reduce the number of persons from four to three for a quorum. My understanding from talking to various parole board members is that this was the previous law and that it worked very well at that time. I digress only for a moment to say, to me, I do not understand why the Guam Parole Board does not have a permanent facility to hear parole applications. It is unbelievable. We have had to go to the Dedodo Sports Complex, Untalon Middle School, the Department of Recreation here in Agana, in order to have these parole application hearings, and there's no place to sit, there's no place to separate the inmate's families from the victim's families. One time when we were at Untalon Middle, Middle School, the restrooms weren't working. Up at Dedodo Sports Complex, it is unbelievable that we have to sit in bleachers along with the inmate's families while people are in the sports complex playing basketball, playing volleyball, playing table tennis, and we don't have a permanent facility for our Guam Parole Board members to sit and hear these parole applications. Something needs to be done about this. But I am really here because I support the provision in the bill that an inmate convicted of a violent crime who has been denied parole two consecutive times should not be allowed to reapply for parole until a certain period of time has passed. I strongly urge the Guam Legislature to amend this bill to provide for an even longer interval, such as 10 years. I ask this because four years is not a sufficient period of time. It is very emotionally upsetting and difficult to appear before the parole board to recount time and again the circumstances of Jan's killing. Every year that we appear before the parole board, we have to relive the pain and loss and grief of losing Jan, just as if Jan had been killed all over again. Please vote to pass Bill 9334. I have a statement from Rachel Lannan that I would like to read after everyone else is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Ariola. Senator Carlotta Leongerero? You may proceed.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker, Senators. I rise also in support of passing Bill 9334. And I also add my voice to Dan Swate and Anita, saying that four years as the interval in between is not enough. We really feel that by pushing for a longer period of time in between, it can allow for, um, the loved ones to begin the healing process. I am the godmother of Jan's three daughters, Molly, Rachel, and Megan. Jan asked me to be godmother several years before she died. And I, at the time, I told her, you know, I was going to make sure that they got gold bracelets, bamboo bracelets, and I would foot the bill for their 16th birthday party, and I was paying attention to them all the days of my life. I think we know that's what that means when you say you're going to pay attention to your godchildren all the days of your life. But then, you don't expect that you're really going to have to do that, that their mother is going to get murdered. And then it's this gaping wound that doesn't heal. Michelle touched on it when she said, sometimes the children come through this damaged or suffering. It's so true, as their godmother, I'm always paying attention and trying to be there and trying to fill in some of the gaping holes. To be at Rachel's wedding in January, her mother's not there because she was murdered. Her father's not there because he died of illness a few years after. It's this horrible gaping wound. She's so sad on her happiest day. I ease some of the burden, but I know when she sees me and her sisters see me, they know I'm the godmother and not the mother. So we carry this horrible sadness, and you can be thinking you're fine. And then you hear a song that she and I used to sing in karaoke. And then for a moment, I'm happy remembering us singing this song, rocking it in karaoke. And then the next moment, I'm going, she's not here. And then I go, why isn't she here? And then I go all the way back to she was fighting for this woman to get her divorced, to get her away from a violent husband. Nobody would take that case, it was so violent, she took the case. And then he waits, and her last moments are going up the stairs, trying to get away from them, and he puts a gun to her head and pulls the trigger. That's where I go. I drive by the stairs, I see it, I hear a song, I, I, I go there. If that's what I go through, I know her children are going through this. So how do I, how do I get past this, where do you go? Certainly not every year where I have to go and say this and do this and, and fight like this. This is not a logical fight. This is a fight from my heart to you, to make you see my way, to make you feel our pain, all of our pain. And what do we know, we never get to know anything. That's the thing that dumbfounds me, that's why I stay ramped up. I don't know anything behind the shield of, of their, their rights and their, their privacy. When I think back on what I went through to fill out disclosure so I could be a public officer, a senator, the public got to know the value of my jewelry, how much my insurance is worth, how much is in my Christmas Club card account, that's what the public gets to know. But somebody can murder your friend and then come in front of a parole board and ask for, to get out, and you don't know. Where did all their anger go? If they were so angry that the last time he didn't get his way, all he was going to do is get divorced and not be able to go back and brutalize his family. He went and murdered, and maybe with a loaded gun, he was going to go murder some more. So the last time he was angry, that's what he did. So where did all of his anger go? I don't know, I have no idea. Does he have loving family that he's made amends with that want him back? Does he have a job that's anxiously waiting for him? Did he, we don't know anything, and I, I am just stunned at that. So absent anything, I stay ramped up. I stay like this, ready to fight like this because, um, the stakes are so high, and she was such a wonderful person, and what she was doing for the safety of families and women in our community. She was fighting to get a woman out of an abusive relationship and to save her children from, and save that woman's children from that. And that's what happened to her, and I just can't not let this go. So I ask that you respect our wishes and think of the victims. And I would also like to say that what Anita was saying is really right. The places that we go to, you can see what it's like for us. We don't know who we're seeing or smiling or next to, and it's life and death, the issues before us. And we see, the last place we were at was the Paseo Conference Room. Mothers pregnant with babies, pregnant come in, and there's no place to sit, so everybody goes and grabs benches and brings it in. They might have been fighting for their loved ones too. There's just no sanctity given to this pain that we all have to share and go through. So I urge you to please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. There's also Barbara Pollino and Angie Menjola signed up to, is Barbara, uh, Barbara? Please proceed.
I apologize for not knowing the porter call of a hearing. I'm not sure whether I can
I'm not sure whether I can ask you a question.
Is it okay for me to ask?
That's fine, sure.
Okay.
I want you to tell me who are your family members that you love so dearly, starting with Senator Lee. And it doesn't have to be a particular, you can say...
My children, my husband.
Yeah, I'd have to say all my family members.
And you, Senator Nelson?
Senator, I'm sorry. I would take your question, but for the others I'd ask their...
Okay, like I said, I don't know. So Senator Trelahi, I ask you that question.
Of course, my family, all my family members, and my beloved friends, and many, many other people.
So as we come before you, I want you to please put yourself in our situation. I know that some people can't really grasp what we go through unless this personally happens to them. And so as we come before you, giving our testimony regarding the support of this bill, that you hear our voice.
My name is Barbara Pollino. I'm the aunt of Melissa Canata, and that's a picture of her right over there. Melissa was a quiet child when she was growing up. She had a smile that lit up the room when she walked in. In high school, she played for the JFK volleyball team. She was fit and an athletic. She was a caring and giving person. Before her death, Melissa opened her home to a friend who lost her job and later was a godmother of her son. Melissa worked three jobs. She worked at the Department of Education Personnel Service, a cashier at Gibson, and a front desk clerk at Hilton. She worked tirelessly to support her husband and children. My niece Melissa was a victim of domestic violence. Melissa was scared and feared that her children would be hurt by her husband, so she kept silent to her abuse. When her family saw the effects on her, their hand would shake as she held a cup of coffee like this, and she would hold her hand but it cupped her mouth. That's one sign of the abuse. She had bruises on her body. She became thin and fragile and not yet athletic type person. Thankfully, a legislative body such as yours decided to change the law. This law instructed pollines to investigate any reports made from persons regarding domestic violence. Today, I thank that group of leaders who enacted that law. While Melissa was supporting her family, her murderous husband stayed home with her friend and children. During the investigation for murder, we, the family, found out that her husband and her friend were having a sexual relationship and that her friend was pregnant with her husband's child. This murderer began his torment of Melissa and my family before, during, and after he murdered Melissa. Today, he continues to torment us by asking for parole, which is his right. My family and I feel like we are the criminals when we go in front of the parole board asking for them to be a voice for us. Thankfully, the parole board has been a voice, and I see members of the parole board, so thank you so much for listening to us. Recently, the Department of Corrections Director said it is in his power to let this murderer have the right to enjoy an Easter outing at the Dedado Phil Complex. Under the Victims' Rights Law, we were to be informed of such an outing, but we were not. This murderer was allowed the luxury of being out of prison confines to enjoy Easter. We again had to defend ourselves while the Department of Corrections defended the murderer. According to former Attorney General Alicia Lintiaca's interpretation of Public Law 1906 and June 18, 2010, this murderer is supposed to remain behind the confines of prison laws. Today, we still have not received a formal apology from the Department of Corrections for not following the Victims' Rights Law or Act. Instead, we were told that it was in their power to have this murderer enjoy an outing and that my family was to call the Department of Corrections Director's office if we wanted to speak to them. Do you believe that? We're supposed to call them. DSC should call us, not us call them. My family and I are tired of defending our rights as victims. We ask that you, our elected body that we put in office, defend and protect us by sparing us the emotional anguish that we go through because rights, because of the rights given to this murderer. I ask that you amend 9434 to say ten years instead of four years and to reduce the number of persons from four to three for a quorum for the parole board. I also agree with Attorney Ariola regarding finding a place. Imagine you sitting next to the murderer's family. So I ask that you find a place that would show respect to us, the family of the victim, and also for the one that we lost. I also ask that another bill be created to reprimand and fully hold accountable those in power who fail to do their job as protectors of the law. The Victims' Rights Law must be followed, and there should be full accountability to it. Please, I ask with humility to change the law and be a voice for the silent witnesses who are no longer here because someone felt they had the power to murder them. And for us, the victims left behind. And like I said, I really don't understand the protocol for the, for this bill or how it goes in the process. I should really research it, but I thank the four of you for being here and taking the time to listen to us. And this is what the parole board goes through whenever we go up to them every year. So we just ask that you help us, and as emotional as it is, we were supposed to have more family members to come in and testify, but we just decided that we'll kind of like reduce the number, but we have them, we have them here. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, and I just want to take this time before Angie's testimony to just say the bill normally, we have a public hearing, and we gather the testimony, and then we report it out. So we do a committee report, we put all the written testimony in there, we transcribe the verbal testimony, everything's put into the report, any research that we've done, we can put that in there too. And we send this to my committee members, and they vote on it. They vote whether to report the bill out of committee, to whether to pass the bill or not pass the bill, or to keep the bill in committee. So that's one vote. And then if it's reported out of committee, we are allowed to try to put it on the session. And so we vote in the Committee on Rules whether to put it on the session agenda or not. So that's another vote by the Committee on Rules. And then, of course, I will let you know if this bill gets that far, I will let you know when, if it's been put on the session, I will notify all of you who have signed in and let you know that that is on the agenda for the session, and then all of the 15 senators get to debate it, and they get to vote whether it passes or does not pass at that point. So, but I will, I will be sure to notify all of you who have signed up. And thank you. And Ms. Manjola, Mrs. Manjola, and...
Thank you, Honorable Senator Vice Speaker Trelahi, and Honorable Senator Muscolli, and Senator Nelson, and Senator Mary Torres. Thank you. I want to commend you, the writers of the bill, Senator Nelson and Speaker Trelahi. This is long overdue, and I'm glad that you put together a good bill for the victims of violent crime. As my sister Bobby and Mr. Sudan and Attorney Trelahi and Senator, I mean, I'm sorry, and Carlotta, Senator Carlotta. I agree with them that maybe it's good to go back to that bill and amend the time from four years to 10 years after two consecutive denial for parole. Even 10 years is, is, is too short for us because we live it every day, and it's very painful. And when my sister Bobby called me up and said, you need to come and testify, and I said, no. It's very hard to relive the story, so I've been praying ever since. I lost a son, and I was like accident, and I asked my sister Pat then, I said, sister, how long is this pain going to, when is it going to go away? And I remember she said, never. I'm sorry to tell you, Angie, but it's never going to go away, it's going to be with you all the time. And then I, I believe her because of Melissa also, and to come and to appear before the parole board is really trying for all of us. We, we, it's very painful. This morning I kept praying, and I said, oh my goodness, Melissa, it's very hard, baby, but I'll do my best to appear before the senators to help, to help us. So I'm here in Melissa's behalf, especially for her children that have gone through a lot, not having Melissa when they got married, when they graduated from high school, when they give birth to their children, and all the, you know, all the experiences that parents go through, and that Melissa's always had, and we try our best. My sister and my brother-in-law Ben, they did a good job in raising up these children. And please allow me to tell a little story about Melissa and what we've been going through. You can see my note because I just, I was thinking, I can't come, I can't do this again. Anyway, Melissa was murdered in 1984. As my sister Bobby says, she was very energetic, very good student and a good daughter, good niece. She's the type of girl that will remember family's birthdays and send messages to them. And her friends called her mouse in high school because she's very quiet, and she'll do, even if she's hurt, she just keeps quiet. But when she was murdered and the, she kept all this, all the harassment and all the evil things that her murderer husband did while they were married, she kept it away from us, and she told one friend that. She's still praying and hoping that the man that she loved, the man that she believed would protect her family, will change one day, and he never did. He continued to harass her, continued to victimize her until she, until he killed her. Point blank, he was a coward, murderer, killing a very petite lady in the car at Coles Range and shot her in the head. And then he continued to lie to us when we went to the hospital that he killed, that she killed herself. But anyway, during the investigation after the murder, the court called us in and told us their findings, and these are just some that I can remember this morning. She kept three jobs to support the husband that didn't have a full-time job. Every time he works, he'll just quit. So he, Melissa had to work three jobs, juggle her time being a mother and a provider for her family. She was not allowed to have a key to her house, but his, her friend who happened to be the husband's sexual partner at the same time was allowed to have a key to the house. So if she comes in, comes home early, then she has to wait in the garage until somebody shows up. The girlfriend was living in her house, and we used to tell her, please help Melissa, protect her from, from Antonio, because we didn't know that she was having an affair in Melissa's home. And then shortly after, I mean, and then also we found out that one night he came home late and the cat, the children's pet cat was, you know, like playing around with him and, I guess irritated him, and he just picked up the cat in front of the children and Melissa and just lashed his throat, under the cat's throat. So Melissa waited until he fell asleep and picked up the cat, went in the backyard and buried the cat with the children, and they put a cross, and they prayed for the cat. And then one of her friends testified that shortly before her death, Antonio got mad at her and was shooting her, her feet, and she was dancing to avoid the gunshot in on her, her feet. And then one day, on Antonio's birthday, murder, Antonio's birthday, she called me and asked me if I can send my daughter to her house to help her prepare for Antonio's birthday. At 11 o'clock, I went to her house to check what happened to my daughter, that she was still there, because she was still there. I opened the door and there was food on the table at 11 o'clock, and I, and my daughter, Melissa, and another person were sitting in the living room, and I said, what happened? The birthday boy didn't come home. He was out gallivanting with a girlfriend. Then one, another investigation that was reported to us was that, or I think it was her neighbor, Melissa's neighbor, that told us that one day it was raining and she came home from work, and nobody was home, so she couldn't open her door, so her neighbor invited her next door to have something to eat and to bring her clothes to wash while she waits for the, for somebody to come home with a key. And so she washed her clothes, the clothes, family clothes, dried it, folded, and then when she heard Antonio coming home, she started walking to her house. Antonio got mad, took all the clothes, throw it on the ground, and took the hose and wet all the laundered clothes. That's how she was treated, so she was abused before, before the murder. And then the children one day came, I think much later they were in high school when they said that, they told us that they remembered them kneeling with their mother in the bedroom praying, and Antonio took the Statue of Santa Maria and threw it at them. Melissa had to pull them to save them from being hurt. At the sentencing, I remembered, one of the things that I remembered, and I'm not going to quote it correctly, but this is what I remember when the judge said, after hearing all the reports, that you acted like an animal to your wife, your family, and that you deserve to be in a cage. I remember vividly. And then, you know, I hate to say it, but I, I felt that the government never, I mean, was against victims because of the way they treated people that have murdered other people. And this guy was allowed the luxury of going to school with very little supervision when he was supposed to be behind bars. He was a member of the Freedom Choir, and he was allowed to attend my father's funeral. And it was crazy. We were mourning for the loss of our father, and there was the, and the choir singing, and I think one of her family members was just so upset that, I don't know, somebody had to restrain one of her family members from touching him because it was just so hard, hard for us. He was allowed to go out into the community for projects, and we have family members that are, that work in the school system, and I remembered one of my niece called me and said, I think I'm going to quit my job. If this is the kind of life we're going to be doing, to be scared because the murder of my sister... because the murderer of my sister is out, I don't know, visiting the school or supervising other inmates." It was just crazy. So really, we've been going through this. Our family have suffered so much to try to keep the murderer of our, of my niece behind bar. I was on my way to be interviewed for a job at the Pacific Daily News building, now D and A, when I met him alone in the, in the elevator. And so I inquired, "What was he doing?" He was allowed to work at the director's office with no supervision while he was reporting to the director's office. And so I, I gave up and not, I didn't proceed with that interview because I was scared for my life. And I did ask to meet with the director, but I was not given that opportunity to meet with the director then. Antonio married and fathered children while being incarcerated, supposedly incarcerated, behind bars. But he has, to date, he has a girlfriend. And I think he also has a child again, not more, not one woman, but maybe three. So he was living in jail like he's living in a resort. He escaped jail one time. And I had to send my sister and the three children to Saipan because we feared for their life. And then one parole hearing, shortly before the parole hearing, he called my sister's house and her foster. These are the things that's happening under DOC management. And so we really fought hard to have DOC management respect the victims' rights. And it wasn't that easy because I remembered we had to go to then Attorney General Lisa Lenteaco. And we had several meetings. And then when she advised or ordered the director then that he's not supposed, that Antonio is supposed to be outside the, the confinement of the, of prison, he, he tried to be defiant to that order. And the AG pushed hard and they pulled him back again into, behind bars. And then we just found out, like my sister Bobby said, that he was out again to, to celebrate Easter with the new girlfriend, maybe. We don't know. So we've been through a lot and we feel like the government really was not on our side. And I, I, I hate to say this, but I feel like the Department of Correction is always against us when we appear before the parole board. I, I just had that feeling because of all the things that have happened and all the privileges that this murderer was given under their supervision. And I'm just so happy that the parole, parole board members really listen to us and that his request for denial has been turned down for the past seven, eight times, I believe. And this bill, Speaker Attila Hie and Senator Nelson, thank you for putting your time. And I think, I think this bill are, are faith that leaders of the island are doing their job. And I, I appeal, Senator Castro, Castro, sorry. Sorry, and that all of you that are here, thank you for coming to listen to our plea. And please ask your colleagues to please support and pass this bill without amending it if possible. Ten years is, to me, is too short. We live the, the pain every day. Like my sister said, "It will never go away." And we will fight. We will fight for our, for Melissa's children. They are doing very well, thank God. But one left the island already. I mean, yes, PJ is working in Hawaii with her husband and her son, AJ, who was six months old. Melissa's son was six years old and was sitting in between Melissa. Two years old. And the first words he said was, "The man killed my mom." And he was just two years old. And Lonnie is still working in Guam, but many times she said she wants to leave the island too. So thank you again. And I encourage you to please talk to the other senators to please pass this bill on behalf of the victims. And maybe consider maybe even more than 10 years if you should meet again to amend the bill. We really appreciate it and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Regina Bisco-Lee and Senator Will Castro. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you to the families of Melissa Kanata. Thank you to the families of Jan Rubenstein. Thank you to the families of Hans Delacruz. And all, all the other victims' families that are here or who have sent in testimony, I thank you. And those who, who this may be just too painful to deal with, I, I thank you also just, just for continuing to persevere. And I want to just say, as, as the author of the bill, I want to thank Attorney Ariola, Senator Carlotta Leon-Guerrero, and Jan Rubenstein's daughter for visiting me one in maybe my first week or two in office. And, and really, really helping me in, in getting this bill done. And of course, the Polino family, I've known very, very many years. And I've seen them go through this year after year also. And we, I think I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that this bill, it, it doesn't do very much to help you. We can't, we, we can't do that. And I feel so very bad about that. But we will try to do what we can. And if, if this, extending that period where you have to keep going before the parole board will help, we'll do that. We'll keep looking at everything else. I've talked to the judiciary about a place for these hearings to take place. I agree, it's really unconscionable that they are traveling around in our parks and recreation facilities. And you sit everywhere. And the judiciary is, in lieu of their new program, I mean, or in, in addition to their new program of, of reviewing prisoners for release, they want to prepare them better for release. I, I think they should hopefully find a place for the parole board to play their role with dignity and for the families of the victims to attend with dignity. And I would like to ask before, oh, I'm, oh, okay. All right, thanks. And I, I would like to ask very quickly, and then Anita forgot we were going to allow you to read the testimony from Rachel Lannan.
Could I just get a, a very quick response from those who are right now on the panel? Changing the four years to 10 years. If you haven't commented on that, could I please get your comment on that? Would you, do you think that is a good idea, Ms. Fytin?
Yes, ma'am, that'll be fine. And if they're comfortable with that, I just, it's up to you. But we're starting at four, so if 10 is, they're more comfortable at 10, we just have to work with the system.
Do you think that will work with, for the parole board, 10 years?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, especially with the ones that have just continually been denied. I, I don't know what to tell you because it's our systems within DOC. It's, it's hard to do some restorative justice in the programs and the, that need to happen for true healing to occur between the offender and the victims when they can't even do, just even take care of the forensic programs. I mean, we're, we're just struck with money. That's the bottom line, DOC. And they do what they can. And they too are short-staffed and short, low funding. And if I may, ma'am, since I have the mic, I just want to apologize to folks who, and thank you for following us to wherever venue we are afforded. You know, and we do that because we want to stay on neutral ground. Because I guess before I became chairperson, I, we were told that being in a facility, we've tried GPD and we've been offered by judiciary and also AGs, but there, the logistics involved. Our, our hearings are usually all day and they can't, it's hard to work the system, their, their timing as well. And we need to be on neutral ground so we don't, same thing. We don't re-traumatize you by being in a court setting or at the GPD location to where you're again reminded of the whole situation. So, so that's why, ma'am, that's the thought about being in these neutral grounds. And it's not the best, but it provides a venue for us. And, and one more thing I do, please, if you would just change the law from seven to five members to make it a quorum of three, I do support that. I didn't share that earlier, but I do support that as well because we do have processes and because there's no funding and, and we're not paid. We're the only board in the nation that is not paid. So, stifling would work in another time. But anyway, thank you so much for, for your time. So 10 years, ma'am, if you all decide 10 years, we'll carry it out if that's what the decision is.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I can't promise that I can change the bill at this point if we want to get it passed soon, but I would definitely consider and do it if it's possible. And Mrs. Kanata, do you have any comment on the 10 years versus four years?
Yes, it will help us and relieve our, you know, going to the board, telling them how we feel. So it's no matter how long, the feeling is, the hurt is always there. And now that the kids are all big, they share my, my hurt. They were hurt, you know, when they're young, but now that they're adult, they always tell me, "Mom, now I know how you feel when my mother died." So 10 years is, you know, will leave, will give us time to, I mean, I, I, this is going to heal, but time to, refers, you know, I don't know what the words to say, but it'll give us time to come back again to the board and we'll, we'll send our hurt again. You know, it's very hard.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry. Is there anyone who has a comment on, on the 10 years who would like to be heard? 10 versus four. Mayor, Johan?
Yes, I, I, I support the 10 years. Let me tell you, it is very painful not to have a mother. And the pain that the children of Melissa goes through on a daily basis, it's, you know, what, what, what Anthony did is, is unforgivable. And if, if at all possible, you can amend, amend the, the, the time from four to 10 years. I mean, it will, it will give them time to heal, but it, it, like Angie says, it, it will be forever. It will linger in their hearts, especially her children. And let me tell you, I am 70 years old. I do not have a mother and I wish I had my mom with me, especially when you're sick. Can you imagine Melissa's kids going through, through all this? So I, I, I fully support that 10 years or longer. Thank you.
Is there any other comment, particularly on the 10 years? All right, again, I thank you. And I would like to open this up for my colleagues to also ask questions or? Senator Nelson? No, I'm sorry. We would like to hear the testimony from Rachel Lannan.
Dear Senator Therese Terlaihi, my name is Rachel Lannan. I am the middle child of Jan Rubenstein. On behalf of my sisters, I am vowing to support Bill 9334. It has been over 20 years since I have been without a mother. I did not choose this. My mother did not choose this. She did not choose to abruptly abandon her young children when Caesar Dizon murdered her. She had no intention of leaving her children to struggle with a challenging trial, childhood, grappling with their mother's loss and struggling to make sense of her murder. In the years since, my siblings and I have continued to suffer without our mother's presence and guidance. The circumstances leading up to this loss of life was perpetrated onto us by the calculating evil of Caesar Dizon, who with great planning chose this life of travail for us. Now he is choosing again, but this time he's, he's choosing to undo the results of his prior actions and have you release him from the consequences of his earlier horrendous choices. He would have you believe that after 20 years, we've all moved on with our lives and that he should also be free to do so. He would have you believe that it has gotten easier for me, that the pain and suffering of my own life sentence without my mother would have by now subsided. Instead, the emotional pain of her absence only becomes more profound and senseless because of all that I cannot share with her. The fullness of my life and that of my sisters has been needlessly thwarted by Caesar Dizon's actions. My mother's untimely death at his hands has and continues to leave a gaping hole in our life, preventing our own pursuit of happiness in a way and manner that we by birth were guaranteed. We have committed no crime, but our long suffering continues unabated. Caesar Dizon is a monster who has proven and demonstrated that he lacks a basic human conscience. Naturally, he doesn't like his life sentence and wants it to end. But my suffering and the suffering of my family has not ended. Caesar Dizon is expecting that merely because of passage of years has transpired that he can end his ordeal. But what about my lifelong ordeal? He claims that the passage of time has healed his violent and uncontrollable tendencies, but he is not healed and neither am I. He doesn't get a pass simply because he now wants to move on. Caesar Dizon has asked year after year to be paroled. But I don't get paroled for my life sentence of being without my mother. Why should he be able to have his own discomfort relieved? My mother's friends, her family and my sisters, all of us, we have no reprieve to our loss of her. We have not been granted any such relief. Caesar Dizon deserves no such relief. He was the one who chose to act on his rage to destroy dozens of lives by his cruel act. Just because some years have passed, don't believe him when he says that he's a changed man or that he's paid his debt. A willful and premeditated act of murder deserves a life sentence in the same way that I have had a life sentence. I, my sisters and my mother's entire group of friends, coworkers and family have not had this gift of reprieve. If Caesar Dizon is released, not only does he get to skip out on the consequences of killing her, but he is also released into society where he has another chance to abuse his freedom and harm someone else. Year after year, I have to open these wounds and to continue to relive, beg the parole board to keep him in jail. If Bill 9334 is approved, my sisters and I will, will at least be able to get a small amount of relief each year without the added burden of traveling to Guam and attending parole hearings. I respectfully ask you to approve Bill 9334. Rachel Lannan.
Thank you very much. And those of us who lived through these, these crimes to our community have all been impacted. These are very violent crimes, many of them involving domestic violence. And like Bobby said, they, they change, they help change our laws. We've had to change our laws. They've changed the way we practice law. Jan was a colleague of mine. And we've all been impacted very, very much. And I, I thank you again to all the families and friends that I see here of, of these people and all of you professionals here also lending your support. And I would ask Senator Nelson, if you have any questions?
Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. You know, like the, the vice speaker said that this bill, you know, we want this bill to help the families. We can definitely not, we can, we're not able to replace your loved ones and we are sincerely sorry for your loss. And I, I'd like to address the situation with DOC. And I'd like to address the situation with DOC. As the Public Safety Chair, I've reached out numerous times to DOC for an explanation of the events that have occurred, and we have drafted a letter to the Attorney General inquiring an investigation be done on that matter. So it is not going unnoticed, and we are looking towards what we can see to fix that issue or that incident that happened. I'm really sorry that you had to endure that kind of suffering and to relive that moment. It was not just and it was not fair for you as a victim's family and the friends of the family member. Thank you for always having to sacrifice a lot of your sanity to come before the parole board every year for those that have seeking justice for the victims. Hopefully, we can implore our colleagues and perhaps we can see if there can be an amendment made to extend the timeline that you have requested. So thank you very much.
Senator Torres?
I'd want to say to Senator Areola, thank you for bringing to light the perspective that parole is not a privilege, and in fact, the laws of the land, the jurisdiction can set parole whether discretionary or not. And when we think about options that are available, it's a good balance to have that in mind, so I appreciate that. But, you know, to the family members, we understand how difficult it is and it's truly appreciated because nothing can bring the matter to heart the way that you can in this forum at the public hearing. So I'm really at loss for words. This is one of the most difficult public hearings I've had to sit through. So, seduce Mossi for sharing and for enlightening us here at the legislature.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Lee?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I agree with Senator Torres. This is one of the most difficult public hearings that I've ever attended and been witness to, but I do want to extend my endunglu nesudus mossi to each and every one of you for coming out today. It really is so important that we participate in this way, and I just, I really commend you for your continued strength and your continued faithfulness to push forward for justice for your family. I was listening intently to Mrs. Paulino as she was discussing victims' rights laws, and I want to assure you that I will look into that and that I will work with the members of this committee to make sure that we do what we can to strengthen those. It's nothing on the level that all of you have had to endure, but my family has also had been victims of violent crime in recent years. My mother-in-law was robbed and was attacked in a parking lot in broad daylight in front of a local supermarket, and as she was loading groceries into her car, she was dragged, dragged by the shoulder, she had a dislocated shoulder, but you know, at the end of the day, she's still with us and she's doing really well, and I'm so grateful for that. But I agree with you that when the perpetrators of that crime were released, we were not notified. And so it took us to continually call the Attorney General's office and stay in close contact with folks at DOC to make sure that we knew what the status of her hearing was, and that's not right. You feel victimized again when these things happen. So I really appreciate again your testimony, it's very powerful. I'm glad that the vice speaker was able to ask all of you about increasing or expanding it from four years to 10 years after two denials. I think that's something I can definitely support. I'm definitely in support of this bill, and I want to thank the vice speaker and Senator Nelson for bringing it. But again, it's really your testimony and your time here today that has helped it to really come to life, and I'll encourage my colleagues to make sure to listen to this proceeding, and I'll let them know myself that I'm a strong advocate for this. And again, I want to thank you all so very much for your testimony. Seduce Mossi.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Castro?
Madam Chair, let me keep my testimony to the, or my comments to the bill. So I rise in support of your bill, Madam Chair, and those who co-authored it, I support both amendments. The amendment to forego next considerations to four years and then the other amendment, I know that my friend Michelle has struggled to attain a quorum in order to address those issues. I also want to state for the families, if it's any comfort, that there are other senators who are closely following this bill, Senator Estevez in particular. I know Bobby, you called me not once, we've spoken several times, and both Senator Estevez and I will follow up with the Department of Corrections. I think it is a serious concern in terms of how our government manages the reintroduction of criminals who have committed heinous crimes into the community, whether it's for a short period of time, such as that one incident recreational, I guess was the purpose, or visitation with other family members, or if it's for long-term reintroduction and rehabilitation. I know that you called me and you were very emotional with your family and that you weren't properly informed about that person being there. I, if it wasn't for your call, I could never, never understand what a family would have gone through in shock and seeing this person there and not having been notified. But again, back to the bill, Madam Chair, I support the draft legislation.
Thank you very much, Senator Castro.
Again, I thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you've gone through and but for coming here today. I know you didn't have to do that, but I think, I promise, as Senator Lee did, that I will talk to my colleagues and I will do my best, and I thank all of you for doing that. That is, that helps us here. When you call the senators, as I said, there will be three different times when this will be put to a vote, and I thank you for that. I thank you again. My condolences again to all the family members, but thank you very much for your advocacy for this and your search for justice. Seduce Mossi.
The hearing on Bill 93-34 is concluded, and we will continue now with Bill Number 91-34.
Thank you again to everyone. Thank you again, oh, not right now. Thank you, everybody. We're going to proceed with a hearing on another bill. Bill number 91-34. Thank you. Bill number 91-34 is an act to amend section 1602 and 1603 of chapter 16, title I Guam Code annotated, relative to promoting affordable access to updated and searchable laws, rules, and regulations, executive orders, attorney general opinions, and court decisions. I want to thank those who have signed up to testify, those who have submitted written testimony. And before I call up Erica Ashbach from the judiciary of Guam representing the Supreme Court staff attorney, or are you the Supreme Court staff attorney? Thank you. Thank you for being here. Bill number 91 is intended to increase public's access to information on the changes in the law and policy so that they can better conduct their affairs in accordance with laws of Guam and better plan for and conduct business and personal matters. It will assure that the compiler of law is authorized to put on her website free of charge those items of laws and court decisions that I mentioned earlier. And we will now accept testimony, so Ms. Ashbach, you may.
Hafiday, Madam Vice Speaker, Senators Castro, Nelson, and Torres. My name is Erica Ashbach. I'm the staff attorney for the Supreme Court of Guam, and I'm here today to share testimony on behalf of Geraldine Sepeda, the compiler of laws, in support of bill 91-34. So if I may, read into the record a letter that Ms. Sepeda has already sent to the vice speaker. Dear Vice Speaker Turlahy, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to submit testimony regarding bill 91-304, Committee on Rules, an act to amend sections 1602 and 1603 of chapter 16, title I Guam Code annotated, to promoting affordable access to updated and searchable laws, rules and regulations, executive orders, attorney general opinions, and court decisions, which you sponsored. Bill 91-34 proposes to amend existing statutory language by requiring publication of superior court decisions and making publications of the compiler of laws available on the compiler of laws website. The proposed language also provides the compiler with the authority to create or enable text-based searchable databases. The stated legislative intent of bill 91-34 is to ensure that the primary sources of Guam law are readily accessible and promptly available to all in the community: legal professionals, government officials, teachers and students, and members of the general public. Bill 91-34 represents a commendable effort to give access to the statutory code, rules, executive orders, and judicial opinions and orders. I wholeheartedly support your desire to give access to these important sources of law. I look forward to working with you and your staff to clarify a few points in bill 91-34. First, I suggest that specificity and guidance is warranted with regards to the types of superior court decisions to be published on the website, for example, by excluding standard procedural and scheduling orders and documents in sealed cases. Second, I respectfully request that you allow the compiler's office and the judiciary with time to implement the mandate of upgrading the access with a searchable database and including information on the compiler's website, rather than having the language effective immediately upon passage. Third, with regard to the timing of the interim updates in 1GCA section 1603, I suggest substituting the word periodic for monthly, which will allow the compiler's office some flexibility. Finally, in light of the additional mandates proposed in the bill, there will be a need for additional funding to the compiler's office, as it will be necessary to account for the labor in preparing and creating the searchable databases and to purchase software and equipment. We appreciate your taking the time to meet with the compiler's office staff to discuss the proposed amendments to the law. Thank you also for giving me the opportunity to provide written testimony on bill number 91-34. I regret that I am unable to give my testimony in person during the public hearing on June 5, 2017, as I have an existing commitment as a presenter at the Pacific Judicial Conference. If you have any questions regarding the above, please feel free to contact me, and her contact information is in the letter. Since her mentee Geraldine Amparo Sepeda, compiler of laws.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashbach. I'd like to acknowledge there's also present in support of the bill. It's Joe Wesley. Bernie Bora, Joseph Bora, Lisa Ivanis, Gloria Duñez Cruz, also from the compiler's office. Thank you very much for being here today. Do my colleagues have any questions for the panel? Senator Lee?
Thank you so much, and please thank the compiler for her testimony. You alluded to a number of suggestions that you had to make to the bill, and the last one was additional funding to the compiler's office for labor and equipment. And my question was, does the compiler's office have the labor or the manpower to issue monthly interim reports of these materials?
So the compiler's office, it's currently comprised of three staff members, the compiler, and then her two assistant compilers, which are Gloria Duñez Cruz and Lisa Ivanis, who are seated behind me. So it's an office of three, and I believe that's the reason there was a request to have some more flexible language, rather than requiring monthly updates in the event that that's not feasible for the office as currently staffed.
Okay. In the beginning of the term, I had the opportunity to meet with the compiler to just have a conversation about my role as legislative secretary and how we could maybe increase transparency in that aspect. And we've been working really well together. I think the compiler's office and our office have done a great deal to increase transparency, which I think is the aim of this bill. So I'm definitely supportive of this bill, and I guess, yeah, we can look into some of the other things that you had mentioned, giving the compiler a little bit more time, specifying which information should be available, and substituting periodic to monthly. So again, I really appreciate her testimony, and thank you for your time and for coming down here. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator.
Senator Torres, did you have a question? Thank you, Attorney Ashbach. Is there presently a way for the general public to access these court orders and opinions aside from the compiler?
So on the judiciary website, you can find, you have access, free access, to Supreme Court of Guam opinions. And also on the compiler's website, of course, there's access to the opinions and also Guam law and all the other regulations and rules that are required of them. But currently, there is not, I believe there is not access to superior court decisions on the compiler's website. There is a paid service called Juris Pacific, and that is how people are able to do a search for superior court decisions. So it's not free access, and so it is a private service.
I believe also. Or they could go to.
Oh, they can go to the library.
The library and physically.
That's correct.
Can we use the resources of the law library to look these up on their computers?
They've got them already digitized, but.
We have to use your computers. Is that correct, Gloria?
Yes.
And there would be no concern with people having access to these types of documents anyways, would there?
No, so that's why there's a request to be more specific as to what kinds of decisions and orders would be readily accessible to the public, such as we, of course, would want to continue to protect sealed documents. But anything that's public record, there should be no concern as to having access to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Torres. Senator Costa? No questions? Senator Nelson? Okay, Senator Nelson.
Did they, in this letter submitted by the compiler of laws, Ms. Sepeda, does she put a specific, or does she have an idea of the specific funding that she would need, perhaps the dollar amount and what it would be used for and why?
That I do not have the information on. Not right now. She can certainly provide further testimony on some more specifics.
And then one more question. Would you still be able to, should this pass into law, would you still be able to execute this law with the current staffing pattern that you have today?
I think if some of the, or if the requests are implemented, such as providing more time for implementation and more funding, I believe, and I speak on behalf of myself here, because I haven't discussed this fully with the compiler, but I do think that they should be able to implement the law.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Castro?
Madam Chairman, in support of the bill, but I just have a question. How does this compare to maybe other jurisdictions? First of all, I want to commend you guys on being very, you folks, on being very progressive in the expansion of the technology services and data you currently provide, but how does it compare to maybe the CNMI or Pacific jurisdictions, or maybe even the most progressive of jurisdictions for an office like yours?
I haven't personally done research to see what other jurisdictions have accessible online or in other mediums. Ms. Cruz is here. She can probably provide more.
Thank you, Gloria. Gloria has been a staff at the compiler's office since I have been a lawyer, I think, so thank you for helping us here, Gloria.
Senator, I believe that up in the CNMI, they've actually contracted LexisNexis, and they handle the databases.
To include all the data that you're describing, or at least the authors describing in this proposed legislation?
As far as I recall, I think it's everything. They've actually outsourced it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Gloria and Erica, could you just confirm, so currently, so this bill, I mean currently, the compiler does an excellent job of providing all the laws and updates that periodically and puts that online in a searchable format. So those are already being done. The rules and regulations that she has confirmed to date, those are online also, and I know that you are working on, working your best on updating the rules and regulations. There are issues with those, but that is part of what is supposed to be available on the compiler's website currently, whatever you can confirm. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that, let me just get a copy of this bill. And the Supreme Court decisions, they are available already, and the compiler has kind of hooked up to the Supreme Court itself, and those also are searchable, those opinions?
Yes, the opinions are searchable on the Supreme Court's website.
Correct. And so this bill actually just adds the superior court decisions, and I am thankful for those suggestions to the amendments, sealed documents, of course, that's a great amendment that I would happily add to this bill, and the time that you would need to do this. And the Superior Court, if you could just explain again for the record, the Superior Court opinions are currently available at the law library under the compiler's efforts. Is that correct?
I can't speak on behalf of the library, but I do know that they have it on their server. But I don't believe it's searchable per se with, for example, DT Search, which is what we use for the laws as well as the opinions. I believe what they have is a list. So the user just has to come in and go through that list.
Yes, just for the benefit of my colleagues, I remember, so our practice has evolved from, we'd have to go to the law library, look manually through the binders, and they would have a table of contents in the binders as to the case name or number, and if we could find it in that list, that would help us. And now we are able to search this list electronically, and that the, and the decisions have all been scanned, and we can find those electronically, download them, print them, forward them, and whatever we like at the law library. But, yeah, so this is intended to just ease the efficiency of the public and those practicing law to obtain those decisions electronically on the website, and I look forward to working with the compiler's office to further implement these. And thank you for your assistance to date with this. It also removes existing prohibition on the law as to the distribution of those, and allows you to distribute all the other types of laws in the same fashion. So we just passed a bill recently regarding the executive orders. I don't, I haven't heard from the governor's office whether that's been signed, but that was also to mandate that they transmit the executive orders to the compilers so that they would be published more regularly than they are right now. I know it's already in your mandate to publish those, but it was just to compel that to be done. And so thank you very much. Does anyone have any other questions? All right, I thank you again. Thank you to the judiciary, to the compiler's office for your assistance and your recommendations, and for your testimony today.
This must.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you again to my colleagues for being here this morning, for listening to the testimony, and for those who presented testimony. This committee will continue to accept testimony until June 14 on the two bills and on the confirmation of Joseph Wesley. You may submit testimonies to my office directly here at the Guam Congress Building, to the mailroom at the Guam Legislature, or through email at senatorsurlahiguam@gmail.com. The public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 12:20. Sidoosmasi.